And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Since this is the first meeting after an election, we do have to go through the process of electing a chair and vice chair. So can I have nominations for a chair?
I nominate Will Keniston to remain as chair.
I'll second that.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I have a motion to cease nominations.
Make a motion to cease nominations.
I'll second that.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, all those in favor of Will being chair? Okay, congratulations.
Thank you.
We need a vice chair, so we're gonna do the same process again.
So, I'm looking for a make a motion, we're looking for nominations for vice chair. Do we have any?
I make a motion that Bruce be the vice chair.
I'll second that.
Cease nominations?
I make a motion to cease nominations.
Second that.
Does anybody wanna know if I accept?
Yes.
I accept the nomination.
So, all those in favor of Bruce be, do we have to do that, vice chair? Alright. Congratulations, Bruce.
Thanks.
Alright, now that we have all the formalities out of the way. Up first, we have our public hearing. Littlemore Falls Town Office, the first public hearing will be Darcy's Halling. Now, are we considering the new license or simply the what's the incentive? How does, when it comes to the public hearing?
So this is the public's opportunity to speak either for or against or neither on behalf of Darcy's.
Do we have any public comment regarding this, on either direction? Not seen any.
Is the person here to give a snapshot of what the, how it is?
Well, would that be appropriate to read? The statements? Was that a?
Since it's also under new business.
Yeah, well that's where you need to determine if you're gonna let her continue to call to the transfer station or not.
Yeah. This is more to get people's input, I suppose, to let us know what they feel.
You did receive in your packet a number of email communications from the business that as well as a statement from the transfer station employee. Additionally, there was an email I received, I think it was about quarter of five last night, from Darcy.
Is this the one that was on the desk when we come in?
Yeah, recounting the incident as well.
Well, I mean, I can read what, what we have for reports, that's, yeah. I mean, do we have any?
Because I'm not sure that that's appropriate.
No, no. So, I guess if we have no public comment, then I'm gonna close the public hearing.
What about me, can I make a comment?
Well, you are a member of the public, as long as, I expect, we have, you know, we just, we prefer when we do public comment, we keep it to the issue and not any individual. That's all we ask.
Okay, well, I'm the individual. My name's Darcy. It's my disposal service that's being asked to no longer dump at the transfer station. I'm not sure why. I'm never given a phone call with an explanation about there's an issue, people are making complaints. All I heard from Bill was, "I'm tired of getting phone calls about you with complaints." I'm in this town once a week for three hours. I drive through the town, I pick up the trash, I go to the transfer station and I dump it. I don't know how many phone calls he can possibly be getting about me, or what they're about even. And does he have actual proof that he's getting phone calls? And if, from what I understand, from what Bill showed me that day at the transfer station, where I was very rudely treated, and I'm sure that he said I was very rude as well. And I was, because I had had a really crappy day to begin with. And I went to the transfer station and I dumped all my recyclables. And I opened up my trailer and I backed it up to dump it. And I waited for the guy to come out of the transfer station and open the gate so I could dump my trailer. And he didn't come out. So I thought, well, maybe he doesn't see me. So I beeped my horn and I waited some more, and he still didn't come out. So I got out of my truck and I stepped out away from my truck so that he could see me out of the transfer window station. And he was standing there like this. And I went, "Can you open the gate so I can dump?" "Nope." That's all he said to me. Treated me like I was a piece of gum on his shoe he was trying to get rid of. I don't appreciate that. I, this is my business. I don't know why, again, this is the second time I've been brought here by Bill. I don't know what he's got against me. I know the person that had this root before me never got any issues from Bill. So why am I? I'm the only female transporter there. I think he's discriminating against me, and I think it's wrong, and I think it's wrong the way I was told that I can't come and dump there. And how does he get to decide? Because I've paid my dues, I have a letter from the town that says I have permission to dump at the transfer station. Now if this is coming before you, how come I couldn't dump for the last three weeks until it came before the city council? Why was I shut down, you know, just because Bill said so? Because Bill told me that he was all done, sick of getting complaints about me. And I told the town manager that you're not dumping here anymore. And that's how he talked to me. That's wrong. I have done absolutely nothing. I don't know what his issue is, but I know if he had received phone calls about me, why didn't he call me and ask me, say, you know, "I'm getting complaints. What's the complaint, Bill?" "I don't know, your, your trash is falling out of your trailer," which is what he showed me was, "I'll show you." And he whoops up a picture of a bad, small bag of trash that's on the road down in the center here. Now I don't know if that's came off my trailer. I don't know if he's just trying to get rid of me, again. I don't know what the issue is, but why is it he cannot communicate with me and say, "There's a problem. Can you fix it? Give me the opportunity to fix it." How do you get rid of a problem if you don't know it exists? Till that day at the transfer station, I didn't have a clue. I think that's wrong. I asked my customers if they had anything good or bad to say about me, to please email the town manager, so that you guys could read whatever anybody said about me. And yes, I sent one last night, because I'd been thinking about this for three weeks. And this has cost me money. I had to rearrange my work schedule to come to this meeting. I had to call my, my customers and rearrange that schedule to come to this meeting. It's cost me, I had to, I've still continued to pick all my trash customers up and I drove their trash to Auburn. And I paid to dump it there. It's your trash from your residence, it should be dumped at your transfer station. I shouldn't have to pay extra because Bill doesn't like me, or Bill can't communicate with me. I'm not a bad person. Read some of your comments, I'm sure. And I know, one of my customers called and talked to Bill and said that she appreciated my business because I go to her front stoop and I get her trash. She walks through the cane, she doesn't walk good. Everybody else wants her to put her trash out curbside and she has a hard time with that. Well, I just go to her curb and I'm into her house and take it. And Bill says, "Well, there's other trash people." Yeah, I'm, I'm another trash people here. Why does he, what's he got against me? I don't understand. And I don't think that I'm in the wrong to question, why is it that Bill doesn't like me? Why is it that I'm going through this process one more time? Last time it was my trailer, too many complaints about my trailer not dumping fast enough. So I went and bought a brand-new trailer that dumps and thought, "Yay! I've had no problems. Problem solved." And then I go to the transfer station and, "Nope, you can't dump here. Just, you know, no, come out and explain it to me." And he comes out and he's talking to me and calling me my Darcy this and Darcy that, like he knows me, and I don't know this guy from Adam. And I don't appreciate that he's talking to me like he's my friend, when he's being a jerk to me, basically. So, that's my public opinion about what's going on here. And that's about all I know about it.
Okay.
Because nobody wants to share any information with me. So, I'm hoping that you will continue to let me dump your residents' trash at the transfer station. I have gotten ordered two covers, one from the back of my truck, which is where I carry my recyclables, one is for my dump trailer, which I carry my trash in. I don't know what else I can do. And I, and I don't know why he's singling me out, again. This is the second time he's done this to me. And right now, money is tight. My job that I do for myself helps me pay my bills. This cost me extra money I didn't have, and I don't think it's right. And I think Bill owes me an apology for not communicating with me that there was an issue, that maybe had he told me, I could have resolved without coming here and going through all this.
Alright, thank you. Do we have any other public comment? None? I'm gonna close this public hearing on Darcy's Halling and move to open the public hearing on the sewer rates.
Before you, or in your packet, you have actually nine different scenarios. The first six were ones that you asked us to present at the workshop. Actually, three additional scenarios, just trying to come up with an equitable system.
I tried to give you as much information as I could. A lot of this information you did receive at the workshop that we had when we were talking about sewer rates. We knew there was going to be an increase this year. We knew that last year was the first year that we've had a budget in many years, and the first year that we're trying to get our revenues to match our budget. We missed, we learned, and we took aim again for this year's budget. The amount that we are showing here, as it states on the first page, we're trying to hit a revenue goal of approximately $810,000. That will cover our O&amp;M costs, that will cover our debt service cost, and it will allow us some money for those people that don't make their payments, so that we don't have the revenue coming in if someone does make their payment. And we've thrown a dart at the wall with that number and figured about 3.7% or $29,000 of non-payments, which eventually we will get, because things go to lean, the sewer, unpaid sewer, these go to lean after three years. And we will collect that eventually, but it doesn't help us right now in this year's budget. So, the scenarios that the board requested after that workshop have been included, those were the first six scenarios. And then today, Carrie, I, and Tammy sort of came up with three additional scenarios you would consider.
Can I interrupt you for a second? I just wanna reiterate to everybody in the world, everybody, that no part in any way, shape, or form of the debt service is covered by general taxation. It is completely, 100% covered by the rate users.
Yeah. Yeah, the entire sewer budget is paid for by the sewer users. There is no money that comes from the general fund, general taxation. We're trying to hit a number for the sewer revenues to cover. So that's where the $810,000 comes from.
We, what was the thought on the repairs under the street? We talked about trying to potentially work and squirreling away some money for that.
There is no money in this year's budget for in-street work. We, and that was explained when I proposed my budget before it went to the town vote. There's just no room for that at this point in time. We've finally determined what we, what it costs to operate. We have determined what the rates need to be to cover our cost of operation. We're doing the best that we can. We don't have anything Cadillac there. We have received $16 million in grant money for the upgrade of the facility. Without that, I can't even imagine what a predicament both Littlemore Falls and J would be in. We have taken a loan for just under $5 million. That will be the amount that we borrow. And we'll be putting $21 million into that treatment plant for necessary, I'd say, improvements, but just necessary work. You know, parts of the treatment plant were over 50 years old and it was time. That being said, the number that we have to hit for this year is 810,000. That does not cover anything for in-street work. In-street maintenance, yes. It does allow, I believe there was $60,000 in there for the Route 17 project when that comes up through if we're not a part of it. We are still scrambling, trying to find grant money to be a part of that project with MDOT, but that kinda got dropped in our lap. They secured CBS money for it, we did not, because we didn't know they were doing that until the CBS awards came out. If we had been a part of that, there's no doubt that we would have been included in the funding for that. That's what, that's a good project to have everybody included, but there was a lack of communication on their part. But we're still, Carrie and I have talked about other funding sources. We've got some leads, but nothing permanent at this time. If we do get something on that, we'll let you know, and there will be a lot of in-street work done, hoping to get grants for in-street work and pump station work. But there's nothing in this budget, so to speak, for a lot of in-street work.
Now I guess my question was, did we want to try to set rates that would allow money to be set aside for that, or do we wanna wait till next year and do that?
My personal thought is, we can't afford to increase the rates any more than what we need to just cover the 810, and that's gonna be a stretch. Unless you've got something to add, Carrie? If you look at all of these different scenarios, I've also included the amount of an increase in percentage that it will be over the previous year's sewer bill. If you look at trying to spread it out the best over the range of sewer users, I am going to say probably scenario six or scenario eight. I am not recommending anything in particular, I'm just saying those look to be where the percentages are most evenly spread out over all of these sewer users. Over the different categories that are kind of delineated. Entirely up to you folks.
This is just a hearing, so there's no need for motions?
No, this is just a presentation.
Yeah, you need to, you need to choose one a little later in the meeting, under your business. This is just the public hearing.
Any comment?
Yes, Erin?
Well, since this is a public hearing, I hope there's room for public comment.
Yep.
Well, I find it difficult to hear that you had mentioned having to increase rates in order to make up for those who do not pay. And I find that unfair, and I don't like it. But I also am wondering how much of an increase can people that are sewer or rate users expect to be paying? Percentage-wise, in general, to have a figure, you know, roughly would be good.
Like a percentage-wise?
Yeah.
Well, I can read to you the ones that were considerate, because they're closest to the 810,000, while kind of being somewhat fair, is, we're looking at, I don't know what everybody else is looking at, but I do agree. I had picked one earlier, but I was in the mindset of, what if we scored more money away? But that's, you know, understandable, because that's gonna, maybe it's tough this year. So say, scenario five, 320 is the starting, is the hookup rate right now, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so this would be a $345 minimum use fee for 0 to 3200 cubic feet, plus .195 cents per cubic feet over 3200 feet. That would give us an $812,300 revenue, just above what we need to operate.
That's number six.
That's number six. Yeah, I was reading six and eight, because those were the ones.
I thought you said, no, I thought you said number five.
Did I say, sorry, six and eight, sorry. I, yes, yes. It must be the glasses, you know. So, for people using 0 to 3200 would be a 7.8% increase on this one from last year to this year. 6,500 of usage would be, yeah, 11%. Well, 11.4, 55,000 of usage would be 17.5% increase, 90,000, 17.8% increase, and 195,000 would be an 18% increase. We were talking, what were we thinking, a house, a family of four or six would be in the 6,500 range?
The state, the state uses, statewide, they figure 6,500 cubic feet is an average family of four.
Is it, right, okay, so.
There will be some that use less, there will be some that use more, and there will be some that use a lot more. But 6,500 cubic feet is a number that we were given years ago, and it still holds. It's kind of a textbook number for calculating.
That's like a median.
Yeah.
Yes, the base rate, like your most, it's quarterly, right?
No, it's annual. Yeah, we work quarterly.
It used to be 75 a quarter, right?
Yes, so $300 a year.
Okay, gotcha, okay. So go up 30 bucks, basically?
Uh, 345, so.
Put in the middle. Well, it was out from 320, right?
Yes, currently it's at 320.
Go, go 30.
Is it gonna be twice a year still?
Okay. Yeah, it's just like the taxes, one bill but two payments. Okay.
Alright, so, for me, and this is, you know, and I happen to agree here, the other one that's up for consideration for myself, and I'm speaking for the rest of the board, would be scenario six, scenario eight, sorry, $400 minimum use fee for the 0 to 3200, and 20 cents per cubic foot, with a projected revenue of $815,000. So 0 to 320 cubic feet would be a 25% increase from previous year. 6,500 cubic feet would be a 22.5% increase. Then the 55,000 cubic feet would be 21.3% increase, 90,000 cubic feet, 21.3% increase, and 195,000 cubic feet would be a 21.3% increase. So, the big difference there is it's, you know, it's about a quarter, a little under a quarter per, you know, category with a larger, you know, minimum use fee. One of the other ones is less of a minimum, you know, use fee for the smaller lots. We have a number, say for example, of, what was it, customers below 3200 is 280. That would, does that include the 77 that have zero, or is that?
Yes.
That, so that number includes that 77?
Yes.
So 280 below the 320 cubic feet. And then we have 400 above the 3200 cubic, cubic feet, just for an example, so. If, we can go over some of the other scenarios, I'm more than happy to read through them. Those ones seem very close and seem to get us where the goal would be, so we can meet funding. Now the question would be, do we talk about which one's the best, which one's the most, I guess equitable, I guess is the word, right?
Do the other scenarios not make the budget, or?
So they're, so, without going through all of them, we have, we have one scenario, I don't know, that's the current one, one that is way above, which would have, probably we were thinking about when we come up with it for trying to find money to repair our crumbling infrastructure under our streets, because they're in really rough shape. And money has just not been set aside in years past, is my understanding for it. And it's coming up that a lot of that stuff's gonna need to be done, you know, sooner or later. So I think that's where that number come from, where we were kinda spitballing that and just asking for scenarios. Another one, scenario two. Another one, scenario two, is twenty-thousand above what's needed. Scenario three is rate at a hundred-and-eight-hundred-and-ten-thousand, so it's rate on there.
A lot of them start out with lower percentages and as, the more the usage, the higher, they're really high.
Yeah, number three doesn't matter, we're still the same.
Not that I wanna pay more, but I think it'd be wise to plan. I know for myself, like I had, when I put the water lines in, they crushed my sewer line and it was literally the old, like nineteen-twenty's, I think, tar paper going to.
Yeah, some of it's a hundred years old.
No, I know, and so, I mean, I think, I mean, again, I don't wanna pay more, but, I mean, I've got houses that I'm paying a hundred-and-thirty bucks a month for the sewer, so three, four-hundred bucks a year is pretty cheap for sewer service.
Appreciate that. Do we want to go over any of the other ones? I'm more than willing to read them out. Do we have any input from the public? No? All right, well, given that then, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing on the sewer. Let's see, get everything back in order, it's a pretty thick agenda. So, up first, we have approval of minutes for April fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five. I make a motion to approve the minutes for April fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five. Further discussion? All those in favor? Ernie, you are not here, so. Welcome, Ernie. Up next, we have old business, sand bids.
We received three bids for winter sand, Castongwe Sand and Gravel out of the Canton pit, which is twelve-point-eight miles away, coming at six dollars and seventy-five cents a yard. C.H. Stevenson out of the Littmore Falls plant, uh, pit, at seven-point-one miles away, coming at six dollars and eighty cents. IRS Paddax in Littmore, coming at the same price as last year, seven dollars a yard. Us, Jay and Wilton decided we wanna go with C.H. Stevenson. Because of the shorter haul, we would save money, that five cents a yard difference, and it's a lot better sand.
Is this their pit out on?
One oh-six.
On one oh-six, that one, okay.
Yep, and we talked to Adam Castongwe and he totally agreed that that was a better deal. We would, that five cents a yard was gonna save hauling an extra five miles one way, was gonna eat that up in fuel.
Yeah, fuel and time.
I sent out four and them the only three I heard back from.
Yeah, and we were waiting on the guy from Jay.
Yes, he got back from vacation last Wednesday.
Okay. So, we have C.H. Stevenson's at, they were the six-eighty, right?
Six dollars and eighty cents a yard.
Well, I would, I move that we accept the bid from C.H. Stevenson for six dollars and eighty cents a yard.
I'll second.
Discussion, all those in favor? Thank you, Bill. New business, Darcy's Halling.
Before we continue, Mr. Chair, I feel it is incumbent upon me to recuse myself from this agenda item because I believe that participating would, could and would be construed as a conflict of interest according to our Code of Ethical Conduct, item eight, and the bylaws of the Select Board, section five, paragraph two. This does not require a discussion or approval of the board, just acknowledgement from the chair and acknowledged by the clerk.
So acknowledged.
Thank you. I'm gonna remove myself from this, I'm here.
So. Do we have any discussion from the board on this, on this agenda item? Given, it's, in my opinion, from what I've read and from speaking with some eyewitnesses, I don't feel that it's good and the best in the town's interest to continue this. That's my, my stance, so. And I will put it out there for a motion and let it go that, to not vote it, to not approve it or to discontinue the rights for Darcy's Halling to the Littmore Falls.
I agree with that, I've read multiple things, I've read all the emails that are sent. There had to be ten or a dozen that were sent, but just the circumstances and how this is, it just keeps coming back and it just.
And why is that? Well, and how come I don't even get an explanation of what the issue is?
The main thing that I take issue with in myself is the verbal language and discussion and directed towards our employee. And he, as having his job, should not have to deal with that. And I do not feel that it's in our best interest or his best interest to put your right to haul there over his right for a safe work environment. And that's how I feel.
I'm sorry, a safe work environment?
Nobody should have to deal with being sworn at, cursed at. I do not think that's right.
I'm, I agree with you. I told you I was in a really crappy mood and the way I was treated was not right. And you're, that doesn't matter to you.
Being treated or perceived to be treated, that's, I was not there, but witnesses said.
What witness?
I'm not gonna say that.
Why, 'cause I know who she is and she's not on my side, she wasn't the last time. She put me in the paper without asking me anything about it or even asking anything about my side of the story, the last time. So, she said to me, she was staying around in case there was some physical contact, like I was gonna attack the guy at the transfer station.
All right, that's, we're, we have a motion on this floor and that's what we're gonna, we're gonna take a vote. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have all, any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? All those abstaining? Motion passes. Up next, we have the sewer rate. Sewer rate, so. We have several options we've looked at. I know Ernie, you're kind of jumping back into this.
I like number six.
I like number six.
I can hand fifteen dollars.
We were on the sewer committee a few times together. Yes, make a motion. So, I'll make the motion that we accept scenario six and set that as the sewer rate.
I'll second that.
Discussion, all those in favor? Thank you for you guys putting all that stuff together for us, appreciate it.
Kevin did all the work and I put it on paper.
Yeah, that sounds about right. Okay. Sealed bid, map twenty, lot eighteen, one-hundred, Main Street.
I got nothing.
Nothing? We haven't sealed any, any bids, nothing? Was this, was this the one that we put back out because of the, we're waiting for the, for the size of the lot and the setbacks, right? Or is that something?
Yeah, well, we had put it out before, so this is the second time it went out for sealed bid. First time we didn't get sealed bids either.
The second time we put it out because we didn't know if it was a non-conforming law, right? It was a conforming law. So, still not that kind of things.
So, the question is, are we gonna hang on to it or do you wanna list it with a broker?
Would be nice to list it with a broker, I would think. You made a motion for that or?
I do, please.
What was, what's her name again? I forget.
Miservian Associates.
Miservian Associates. So, I make the motion, we place map twenty, lot eighteen, one-hundred, Main Street with the Realtor Miservian Associates.
I'll second.
Discussion, all those in favor? Next, we have sealed bid, map twenty, lot thirty, twenty-two, Gagnon Street.
Same, we received no bids, this was the second time this one also went out. Asking for permission to list this one also with a broker.
I think that's a good idea.
Well.
That's the second time we put them out, right?
Yeah, yeah, well, first one was kind of, you know, questionable, but they had a chance to look at it, so. Well, I'll make the motion that we put out map twenty, lot thirty, twenty-two, Gagnon Street with Miservian Associates.
I'll second that.
Discussion, all those in favor? All right, fuel contract.
We walked in last week with Winthrop Fuel, again, this year at two dollars and seventy-three cents a gallon, which is just over a dollar a gallon cheaper than what we had budgeted for. And last year, we paid three-sixteen a gallon for fuel.
You said two-seventy?
Two-seventy-three, what, two-seventy-three bucks.
What were you budgeted for, three?
Three-sixteen.
Three-sixteen.
Wow, cool.
Well, good news is good news then, right?
Yep, us and Jay and I think Wilton's in this too, but I know us and Jay definitely am, we all walked in last week.
So, we're gonna. Yes, all set? All right, I move that we, what was the name of the place again?
Winthrop Fuel.
Winthrop Fuel, okay.
We've been with them for several years and have not had any issues.
Okay. I move to approve the fuel contract with Winthrop Fuel, Winthrop Fuel in the amount of two dollars and seventy-three cents, point-five per gallon.
I'll second.
Discussion, all those in favor? Is fuel contract and diesel contract separate?
Or are we? Eaten oil and propane is separate.
Yeah, I put it in there twice with two different words, so, sorry.
No, no worries.
That'll be next month probably.
Next month.
There is no fuel contract, that was actually the diesel contract, so.
All right. Do we need to amend that to say use the contract? All right, transfer station contract.
Our contract with EcoMain runs out June, might as well say July first. Their new proposal was a hundred-and-thirty dollars a ton for MSW and a hundred-and-thirty dollars a ton for recycling. Midmain Waste to Energy in Auburn offered a hundred-and-five dollars a ton for both MSW and recycling for a five-year contract. If we go to main waste to energy, our hauling cost would go down to two-hundred-and-fourteen dollars and fifty cents per pole versus the three-hundred-and-forty-six dollars and fifty cents per pole to EcoMain.
Wow, that's significant.
Yes. We do between about fifty-two loads of MSW a year and seventeen loads of recycling a year is what we've averaged the last three years.
One's a three-year contract and one's a five-year contract?
I believe they're both five. Am I correct on that, Kerry?
Um, Main Waste to Energy did propose a three-year contract, but it was more money for the shorter term.
Yes, it went up to one-ten?
I think it was one-ten a ton. If you do the three-year contract, nine-one-oh-five for the five years.
Now, which one had the hauling information, was that the Amato, what was that? What is this one? The Jerry Amato?
Oh, that was Archie's, he wanted a chance to own the hauling and he gave us a price of two-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars per pole to midmain waste because his trucks are coming out of Auburn, Almighty's already in Auburn. I mean, his trucks are coming out of Mexico to pick up the container, so he cannot compete with Almighty.
Was it just the, the two of the EcoMain and the midmain waste or was there another one? That was just, because I had, I was trying to figure out, there was one piece of paper in here that was, had a bunch of rules and stuff with no, what is the MWA waste disposal and recycling?
Oh, that's just the rules that were part of the.
Was that part of the?
Proposal for the main waste to energy.
Okay, all right, that makes sense. I was trying to figure out which one that went with, because I see the EcoMain had them all labeled out. What is the, what do we typically see returned, set a period, because I know they have says in here fifty percent recycling. What, what does that actually look like, just out of curiosity?
It's, I gotta do a report, do one report by annually every other year and then after one report for DEP every year. They take in the brush, all our demolition, our shingles, tires, all goes into a formula the state has for their whole, state's fifty percent recycle. When I did it this year, we come out to, I believe it was like forty-two percent, which we've never hit the fifty, it's just no way. But that's the state's goal, have everybody hit fifty percent recycle.
Because it sounded like there was a revenue share tied to that, what is?
There is, but the market, last year, we didn't give back hardly anything.
I remember you saying the market tagged on plastic and stuff.
I, I cannot remember the number, but I mean, I think it was under, under five-hundred dollars. Does that sound about right?
Yeah, I wanna say three or four hundred for some reason, I don't remember.
Like three, four years ago, I think we got back like fourteen, fifteen hundred, but it is just absolutely tank. Todd Ward used to be a big payer and they're telling me right now, Mr. Amato from Archie's, that it's down to like twenty-five bucks a ton and it used to be over around seventy-nine.
Wow, that's sad.
Yeah, at least with the main waste to energy, they're, they're burning everything and they're converting it to electricity. We're recycling that way at least, even with the MSW, it's not just going somewhere else.
Because I see EcoMain was saying they're building a new facility, I'm guessing that's why they want my, they wanna pay for it by the sounds of it, but that's just my opinion, just reading through it. Do you have any, what's the thoughts between the three and the five-year contract? Five's cheaper.
Five years is cheaper.
So, possibly lock in at five years and just run with it?
Well, and it's less expensive.
Was this percentage, was this tied with that also? I'm gonna, this database tables and calculations.
Yeah, it's, it, they do do a CPI increase every year.
That's, I see the two to four percent cap. Is that what this was tied with, was that?
Yeah, that was just to, to show you how they come up with that percentage increase every year.
Yeah, well, I was just wondering, because there wasn't something on to that tied it necessarily with anything, but that was gonna be my guess. Yeah, well, I was just wondering, because there wasn't something on to that tied it necessarily with anything, but that was gonna be my guess.
What are the conditions of backing out of a five-year contract if you guys get a better bid later on?
I don't believe we can back out of a contract, once we sign it.
But, and we probably won't be looking for another bid until that five-year thing is out.
And the thing that it's, is, is a five-year contract is that it will not increase.
Right, well, other than the. Yeah. Okay.
Could also go down.
What were we paying before with EcoMain, just out of curiosity?
Now, we're paying eighty-nine dollars.
Sixty-five cents a ton for MSW, and their new proposal is one thirty.
Yeah, it's going up forty bucks, right? Or more.
Yep.
Let's go with the whole one for five years and get it done.
Okay. We have a motion?
Make a motion, honey.
I can't, because I forgot what company it's for. So, I'll make the motion to, uh, go with the five-year contract with Midmain Waste, uh, Action Corporation.
I'll second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
And then, we also need to select a hauler, there is no contract, but you still need to determine who you, do you want to continue having Almighty haul?
Well, they're.
For two fourteen fifty a pole?
Yeah, well, I mean, we only have the two haulers, right, and Archie's is way above, so.
Do we make it official?
Yes.
I thought we did.
Well, there, that's the hauler, the other one is who they're gonna haul to.
Uh-huh, okay.
So, I move that we approve Almighty Waste, or was it two fourteen?
Fifty, correct.
Two fourteen fifty?
Fourteen fifty.
Okay, the amount of two fourteen fifty.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Thank you, Bill. All right. Up next, we have map twenty lot forty, one twenty-six Pine Ridge.
So, so items eight point eight through eight point twelve are all.
Jerry, did you say the right now?
Map twenty-four lot forty-four ON.
I thought you said something different.
Oh, okay, yeah. Um, yeah, so eight point eight through eight point twelve are all foreclosed, uh, properties. They've all had their ninety-day real honest-to-goodness last. Thirty, ninety-day notice, uh, redemption period has expired, so, um, you need to make a decision as to whether or not you want to list these with a broker to be disposed of. They are all either vacant properties, um, there is one that is a business. If it's easier, you could move those as a block.
We've had very little luck with sealed bids, we've only had a couple takers on a couple different parcels so far, so.
And you said that's eight through eight through eight point twelve?
Correct. I'm asking for permission to list these with a broker.
I move that we list the items on the agenda, eight point eight through eight point twelve, map twenty-four lot forty-four dash ON, map eighteen lot one fifty-two, map eighteen lot fifty, map eighteen lot fifty-two, map twenty lot one sixty-nine with the broker, uh, contracted with a town to sell.
I'll second that. Discussion, all those in favor?
The next three properties are also foreclosed, eight point one three through eight point one five. Uh, I'm asking for permission to work with the owner, it's, uh, it's one family that owns those three parcels on a repurchase agreement. Uh, we did the same thing with the sewer foreclosure and that has been paid off, so. And these, uh, one of these is an occupancy, or occupied home, so.
I move that we authorize the town manager to enter into a repurchase agreement with the owner of eight point one three through eight point one five, map thirteen lot forty, map thirteen lot twenty-nine, and map thirteen lot thirty-nine. I'll second that. Discussion, all those in favor? Up next, we have town meeting, results discussion.
So, no secret, we did have, uh, six articles fail at the town meeting. We have a couple options to revote on those, um, I, of course, we could do just a traditional old town meeting, which I would like to advocate, but we don't do that. I feel that, um, there's a real intimidation factor there for people to raise their hands, or that's been my past experience, anyway. Uh, we do, uh, we did find out that we can do a shortened polling time, we can do as little as four hours to have the polls open. So, looking at that, backing into it, we could do, um, a new vote on June twenty-four. That would make absentee ballots available on May twenty-second, um, with a public hearing on June third, but, um, you would have to approve the warrant on May twentieth at our next town meeting, so we would have to get together with the budget committee at some point next week. So, um, but it's just, like I said, it's those, those six articles, so it, it shouldn't be bad, and, um, Doris and I talked, and we feel it would be easy to do a hand count, so we don't have to wait around to send the ballot out and get it formatted and sent back in.
Wouldn't you say do a hand count? Oh, a hand count, okay, I thought you meant hands raised, I missed.
No, no, flip the papers.
When you, uh, you talk about, oh, we'd have to do a minimum of four hours, was that what it was said? When, if you, if that were to be the case, when's the best time to do that, given like how the polls flow?
We said, we talked about two to six, right? I can't see your mark.
Yes.
That seems to be the busy hours usually.
After work, yeah.
And we're just gonna be looking at, for the budget items.
Correct, for six, yeah.
Okay.
Any thoughts on that?
Well, that's what I would prefer.
Have we had any feedback from anyone on why they, they chose to vote some of these items down?
No.
No, I've, I've tried to get feedback, and I haven't had much luck, other than I just voted no, so, which isn't helpful. It'd be nice to have some feedback, if you listen, it'd be really nice to have some feedback on why you voted no, so we can address it, because we have to get these items back out, so we can keep moving forward.
Well, for example, the, you know, the debt service article, we, we have to pay our debts, you know, we, we don't have a choice. If we default on those, there are very, very serious consequences and implications of that, um, you know, namely, you know, several million dollars in principal forgiveness on, with some re-treatment, um, bonds that are out there. Um, and we haven't even, we don't know the implications of, um, the CDS funds if we default on any of these lines, so. Just that, and our, um, our ability to bond money in the future would become compromised as well, so. I mean, the money's already, already been spent in, in most cases, or is being spent, so, um, we borrowed it, we, we have to pay it back, so I'm not sure, I'm not sure why that failed, other than, you know, my previous statement that, uh, there's misinformation out there, that, um, general taxation and everybody, every taxpayer in town is paying for the bonds, that's not the case. The only bond that every taxpayer is paying for is the fire station currently. All the other bonds we have are for the treatment plant, and the ratepayers are paying those.
What was the one that was split between Jay, the four hundred, and there was one that was listed as a total price and then?
Yeah, so there's three bonds that we have, that Jay is actually paying half of those for the treatment plan upgrade. We have five bonds for, currently, right now, for the treatment plan, and Jay is paying half of three of those.
So, the number reflected was probably maybe?
Correct, but the revenue we get from Jay for paying that half was in the revenue articles that passed.
Yeah.
But you have to raise, you have to, you have to approve paying the total amount, regardless of, of where the revenue comes from.
You may make the ballot a little longer, but if we've got three or four that we're gonna redo, if there could be a, and in the past, there's always been an expla, an explanation, or the select board supports this, instead of putting it at the bottom, I don't know if this is legal, could we put the explanation at the top?
I can check.
And that way, they could read that before they vote. And that debt service, I don't know how you could explain that, other than we owe it, and there's penalties if we don't pay it.
Give them a little more understanding of what they're actually voting for.
Yeah, because see, the thing, you know, you get your little thing and you put your check by it, after you do that, you're moving on to the next question, and if there's verbiage underneath, most people are quite apt to ignore it, because they've already put a check on it.
Especially when it goes, if it's too long, and it goes into a whole lot of legalese, you just glaze over and go, and move on.
It'd be good to invite people to come in and at least listen, you know, I know it's on a public hearing, but.
No, but I mean, it's, it's open.
Right.
The budget committee is open to anyone who wants to participate.
Right.
Do you say? Can I do six, six-thirty, doesn't, five?
Yeah. No, I can't do five.
And that would conflict probably with Will's work scheduled as well.
I'll just, I'm coming in dirty if it's that early, that's all you get, dusty and covered in mud.
Six is. Well, because I got, I got my, uh, stuff from graduation.
Yeah, okay, I want that. So, what, what for you?
Oh, no, I, I can do six.
Six.
I'm gonna tie it, tell me when.
You put six for?
Six.
Okay.
It'd probably be good to just let anybody you know to come in and, come in and listen if they have any questions. This would be a good place to get some information on anything they don't understand, or, you know.
Can we comment at all, or?
God, you, can we wait till a little later?
Well.
Or, well, I, it's okay, Dan, I don't mind, I, I approve yes, I'm fine.
I just want, on the, on the thing to make it simple, could you just put, like, a vote yes, cost of town ten dollars, a vote no, cost of town twenty dollars? You can't put that like that. I just, I mean, for me, oh, ten dollars. I thought you, why can't you do that?
Because it would be too simple.
Okay, fair enough.
The state controls the ballot.
Sorry?
All right, so next Tuesday at six o'clock?
Okay.
Okay.
In the voting, do we have to, voting day and time, do we have to?
Yeah, I was gonna say, so do you wanna?
Want to set that now, then?
Please.
Oh, I think so, yes. Vote on the twenty-fourth of June, with all the stuff that has to be done ahead of time.
Okay.
Two to six.
Two to six, two to six P.M.
On June twenty-fourth?
On June twenty-fourth.
Move to set an election for June twenty-fourth and seek, form a secret ballot from two to six P.M. at the town office.
Wasn't there an absentee in there, though?
What?
No, was there any absentee ballot?
Well, there will be, but it'll be.
No, it's all from.
Yeah, it's all part of the, the timeline.
I second the motion.
Discussion, all those in favor? Yeah, no, that's, it gives us enough time to be able to get the absentee ballots, so. All right, Anderson County Budget Committee.
So, I realize I don't think I put that in your packet.
No, there's a, yeah, we have it.
Oh, it was, okay.
Yeah.
Anybody want to be on the budget committee?
I made the mistake of emailing Sally, asking just a random question, and she seems to want to know if I do it, so. I'm not a hundred percent sure what it entails, I mean, it's, it's a caucus, and I don't know what, how often they're gonna meet.
I was gonna say, I don't believe anybody has been on the, the county budget committee previously, but I just wanted to offer it up to anybody that wanted to go crunch numbers.
Yeah.
Wanted you to try to, try to have some influence to get our county assessment down a little, perhaps. And Jim has all kinds of time now.
I was just thinking the same thing, I heard that.
What, two people? We're looking for two people, right? And one of them.
Up to two, yeah.
Up to two. I'd be interested in giving it a shot, it could at least make me better at doing the budget here, or helping with it, so. Jim, you interested?
To, to do what?
No, I think I heard him say he likes his free time now.
His free time? The lawn's already raked.
Sure.
All right, I'll put that paperwork in. Thank you.
All right. Up next, we have warrants, payments, deeds, and quitwains.
I make a motion, we approve seven point one, seven point two, and seven point three.
A second, discussion, all those in favor? Bruce is absent.
So, people are aware, the, uh, the quitclaim was for one of the foreclosed properties, um, she came in this week and, and paid that off, so.
Awesome.
Um, next meeting, I will have a, a pile of other ones, the quitclaims that have been paid off, due to sign as well.
Okay. Up next, we have board discussion. Something going down, I mean.
Getting in somewhere?
Yeah. Maybe it's all the stuff.
Are you looking, if I might?
Yeah.
I've been gone a while, I might have lost touch with a few things, but there was an apartment complex proposal in the old junior high. Is that progressing, or has it been dropped?
He's still waiting to secure his funding for that through the state. Actually, we should have heard from. Yeah.
He said end of May, first of June.
Okay.
And there was a proposed recovery house on Park Street, and I haven't heard anything on that for a while.
No, that was discontinued totally.
That was what?
It doesn't meet any of the standard requirements, it was totally, uh, turned down.
So, it fell through the, okay, thank you. So it fell through the, okay, thank you. That's it for me.
The only thing I had was something simple was about the, if you'd had any chance to look into the flower, the sponsor, or that had gone, conversation had gone any further.
Yes, we have.
You have?
Uh huh.
Make any headway?
Yes.
Yeah, good.
It's, it would be about fifty dollars a basket. They do not require water, and I need to talk to Bill to find out how they can be installed.
Well, how would they not require water out of curiosity?
Because they're not real.
They're not real?
Oh.
I said, oh, you can still water them, I mean.
It's totally up to you.
So fifty?
They can leave them up to the weather.
But you're gonna have to climb a ladder to determine they're not real. They look real.
Okay.
While I was out of the room, you didn't nominate me to be on this committee thing, did you?
Yes.
But congratulations.
You and Jim.
Shoot me now.
Take any chances.
Good.
Yes, we do have.
Okay, so we're kinda looking into that. Awesome, I appreciate that because that's, I think that'll look good down through Main Street if we can do something, but we gotta figure out funding and all that other good stuff, so.
Well, that way we don't have to bother the fire department to water them daily.
Yeah.
I'll know, I'm sure they love it.
Yeah, I've got nothing better to do.
So you don't need the fertilizer from the sewer to pump it?
No, you can save that one.
Yeah.
Pump your fire truck and spray it up so they don't have water.
All right, I don't think we have any other board discussion. Managers discussion?
So just a few things. Welcome back, Ernie, first and foremost. The church in Parsonage has been listed. I haven't looked to see if it's online yet or not, but it was supposed to hit the, this week. Since Jim is no longer on the select board, he has graciously offered to be on the Budget Committee and the Board of Appeals. So if I could ask for an appointment to those two positions for him, would be good.
I move to appoint Jim Long to the Board of Appeals and to the Budget Committee.
Oh, is that good?
Wait a second. Who said it?
Five of us.
Everybody give it.
I know.
Go man. Pick one.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Um, and.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
And actually likewise, we need to accept Ernie's resignation from the Board of Appeals.
Oh, I did that and, you know, whatever. I, I was on.
Normally.
Seeing as you can't hold it anyway.
I move to remove Ernie from the Board of Appeals.
So moved. I mean, I'll second that. All those in favor?
Thank you. And then.
I would like to move that Aaron Cuntell take the empty seat on the Board of Appeals. Just, just, just a thought.
I might have to resign from the Budget Committee.
Nah.
I'll let you go tomorrow.
I'm done.
Okay, all right. And then the last tidbit I have is we, all these crazy grant writing that we've been doing, I can finally announce it publicly. We did receive a seventy-five-thousand-dollar grant from the Governor's Office of, well, something, go PIF anyway, policy and innovation and, but it's for to replace the windows in this building.
Yay.
Yeah. Yay. And that's it.
All right. So, speaking with the new Vice Chair, he made a suggestion, and we're gonna do some alphabetical order when we go through our department heads. Maybe we'll switch it back and forth, just so, try something new. So I'd like to start off, we do department heads, I'd like to start off with Doris since it's Austin. So unless, I know I didn't do too well in school, but we'll go Doris Austin.
I wanna thank everybody for the turnout that we had on Election Day. I have never seen so many, so much of a turnout for the town warrant, and it was really great to see that many people involved. Three hundred and seventy-six is what we had, and I will be honest, that's more than twice what we had last year, and it's four times more than the year before, I believe. And so, thank you, everybody, for coming out. It was great to see everyone. Town will be having the History Night Cruise in Friday, May twenty-third, from five to eight. You should really check out the flyers because it has Max Car on it.
Do we have flyers available sometimes?
It should be a great turnout. Last year, we had ninety-seven classic cars out here. AYS will be cooking up some food. There'll be some other vendors out here, face painting for the kids. Paper Heritage Museum will be there. I think that New Orleans will be there. It'll, it's a great fun night for everyone. There's something for everyone.
And my store will be open.
Free samples?
Yeah, sure.
There's probably more that I can't think. Oh, the parade. Don't forget about the parade. Memorial Day. I forgot what title it was. It's ten o'clock?
Ten to six.
Ten. Starting up at Nemo's Cove and coming down.
Finish right here.
And hopefully not raining this year.
Some of us have convertibles.
If it's raining, you don't have to go.
Yes.
Tammy, can you give us yours? No, mine? Well, we'll come back to you then. All right, Nathan? Chief Gupto?
So, today I went and met with D E P. on a training burn we're gonna do in town. It's taking place very shortly, just so you guys know. It's on Musso Road, three forty-four Musso Road. So as soon as we get the green light from D E P., which is pretty much a go, then we're gonna get our mutual aid towns involved and do some training in there and then touch it off.
What are you burning, just out of curiosity?
It's an abandoned house.
Forty-six Musso. It sounds like bringing marshmallows or?
No, you won't be able to get air. The house is old and it's gonna be hot, and so.
Where exactly is that?
Parker's.
Right at the base of the hill.
Parker's House.
The, the one that I talked about? Oh, such a nice house, or it was.
Was.
I love it. Be interesting.
A lot of people have been living in.
Okay. I only ask you because I'm at one sixty-six and I'm thinking, which one of my neighbors is? Okay.
So, like I said, we met there today. We were there for probably an hour and a half doing a walkthrough and site visit and everything. I don't know, there was five or six different unique branches there. They're all good with it, so as soon as we get, there's just a few things that needs to be picked up before we can train. And once that's done, we'll be able to move forward with that.
Okay.
And I think we're in pretty good shape.
All right, thank you. Appreciate the updates. We're gonna jump over to Nathan. We're cops.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I thought I would start out with, I know that some of you folks are starting to get phone calls for property visits, so I'm gonna go through what I do and where we go from there and what I can and can't do. And I'll bring these up to you so you can look at them. So the first time I go to a property, I put a green card on it. It's non-threatening. It's just like, hey, I stopped by, and then there's a list on here of things that their property is in violation of, or I have other, if I have questions about permits or whatnot. So there's no question as to why I went there. And then in thirty days, if I haven't heard from the property owner, then they get a yellow one. It means we're cautioned, you know, we're, we're getting into a problematic area. If there's no response after those thirty days, they get a red one. And then after the red one in thirty days, we go to notices of violation. Those are thirty days each. Once we've exhausted that, then I come to you for fines. Once the fines are exhausted, we go to court. Leans can happen, so on and so forth, and then we end up having more properties if they don't wanna voluntarily comply at that point, that will end up on the, on the lien list. When I do go to properties that have stated no trespassing signs, that pertains to an awful lot of people except me. If I am doing, if I'm going to their property, doing my job during the course of a business day or any day, doesn't have to be a Monday through Friday, doing the duties of a code enforcement officer under state statute four, four, five, two, it's not considered a trespass. I do have to have permission to enter people's buildings, but I don't have to, to go on their property. Now, with that said, if someone asks me to leave, I gladly leave. I don't make it a scene about it. I have a right to be here or whatnot. I just go. And as I'm leaving, I try to have a conversation with them that if I can't do it voluntarily, then I can go to district court and I can get an inspection warrant, and then I come back with the police and do my job that way. So there's a number of avenues for me to be able to go to people's properties to assess the situation and what's going on, what rules and ordinances and state laws and stuff that they're violating to move progress forward, because there are a lot of towns, a lot of houses in town, properties that have opportunities to get better. And if, at that point, when I have a warrant and the police with me, then I can go into the property as well. I don't have to be invited. So voluntary compliance is the big thing. That's all I'm looking for. And with that, I have visited twenty-one properties so far. Of the twenty-one, four people have gotten back to me, and we are working together to get their properties where they need to be. One notice of violation has been issued, which you saw in your mailboxes. And I, I mean, everybody I've dealt with has been respectful, so I, that's how I deal with them. I wouldn't expect anything less coming back. And, you know, it's gonna take time, you know, but people are willing to work and they recognize that they have opportunities, and over time we'll, we'll get them done. Leave these things up for you to look at.
Does your authority also go as far as, say, trailer parks or subsidized housing?
Yes. When it comes to the parks or anything that's a rental property, the tenant can invite me in. I have to be invited in to go in, to do an inspection. Without an invite, I can stand in their doorway. That's, you know, I can peer through a window, so to speak, but I can't actually physically go into someone's residence without an invitation. If it's public property, if it's, excuse me, open to the public, then I can go in. If there's areas in this public setting that are off limits to the public, then I need to be invited into those areas.
Does this also include businesses?
Again.
We've been saying residential and whatever, but I wondered, you know, sometimes some businesses are not up to snuff.
Correct. Yeah, again, it's, it's not to be confrontational. If somebody asks me to leave, I'll leave. I mean, I have the law on my side, so there's no sense in being argumentative with them about, well, I have every right to be here. There's no sense in getting their dinner up any higher. If they don't want me there, I'll leave, and then I explain to them, you know, what the ramifications are of not letting me access the exterior. I explain that I'm not looking to go indoors. It's just outside, because that's where most of the violations occur. And then I have other agencies to call on from the state if they're needed as well. If it's, you know, Department of Agriculture, D E P., D H H S., all of those. As the local health official, then I have other authorities that I don't have as the code official. And if there's health risks or whatnot, some of those through checking outside of, within the town, that I do have the authority to go ahead and go in, but typically I will have law enforcement with me. That's all I have.
Thank you for coming to sit on that and sharing your knockers and stuff and your procedures.
Sure.
What do we go with next? April, please.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Members of the Slade Ward community, members of the community, good evening as well. Last month was a busy month. It kind of like start spring for us. So we had three, almost three hundred events. We had two hundred and ninety-nine events last month, calls for service. Forty-six of those were motor vehicle stops, so we're averaging about ten calls per day. So it's, we're really busy right now. The new car is currently in service, which is a good thing. We also placed the order for the drone. I mean, at this point, working on training, operating and licensure for Officer Dable, which is one of our new officers, has, this week is his last week for supervisor, supervised patrol. Officer Corson, which is our newest officer, is currently in the seventh week of the F T O program. And just to remind the select board, the way that the training works for the department is they have about three weeks of the in-service training where they're not with the organization. They're outside of the walls of the organization, in-class study, if you will. And then when they're done with that, they come back to the department. They complete a twelve-week field training program. And then after that, they do about four to six weeks of supervised patrol where they physically are working with somebody. In addition to that, at some point during the calendar year, they'll attend a eighteen-week academy, and then they'll be a fully accredited certified officer. So staffing-wise, we're doing good. I'm currently trying to seek two more, two more positions, and I'd really like to have somebody in background right now. And I'm kinda wrapping my head around how to, to reach local talent, because I think it would be a really good idea to hire a local person, somebody that knows the community, the people within the community and can be a leader within the community that they live in. So if there's any food for thought on how, how to do that or how to find the right person, you know, I'm all open to, whether it's from the Slade Ward or members of the community. I reached out to Food City and they allowed me, they're going to allow me to put like a little flyer up there, so I think it's a, a good opportunity for us to work with local businesses where we could post our flyers and, and see if we could get people pass by to say that they're, they're interested, or they know a son or daughter that may be. The, the staff enjoys the schedule, so right now we're doing twenty-four hours on, twenty-four hours off, twenty-four hours on, and then four consecutive days off, so the, the staff is enjoying the hours. And I don't get any complaints there. Our fuel costs over the cost of winter, we were right about a thousand dollars. There wasn't a lot of deviation in there, so if there was, it was, believe it or not, it was kinda shocking, maybe thirty, thirty to ninety dollars deviation between month to month throughout the winter. So right around a thousand dollars in fuel costs per month. And then we're gearing up for the, the public event center coming up and endorsing touch base on it. So we're looking forward to getting involved with the community for the, for the cruise in as, as well as the upcoming parade. And I, and I know that we have a meeting with the fire department tomorrow. I'm gonna kind of go over the details as far as that goes. Any questions? Oh, and, and Mr. Chair, just for your consideration, in municipalities that I've been employed with, what we've always done with them is the director reports were done once monthly, so they would do like half of the division on the first meeting, and then they would do the other half of the division on the second meeting. So if that's also something of consideration, just kind of putting it out there as well.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you. Any questions? All right, Mark?
Yeah, just an update on the upgrade process, progress, I should say. We're gonna be paving the Foundry Road, reading and paving probably within the next month or so, Bill? A month to six weeks?
Well, we gotta kind of wait and see when the capital improvement passes.
Yes, once that passes, we'll get to this. Good point. The contract that T. Buck will be doing there, work down there, tearing the hot dog up and repaving, loaming and seeding, so the outside of the treatment plant will be pretty much done. Any upgrades from here on in, the public won't even notice probably is being done because it'll be inside the buildings themselves. The only other thing we have is work on the secondary clarifiers, which will probably take place, uh, the end of twenty-six or the start of twenty-seven, I'm guessing. So it's gonna look like it's pretty much done, but there's still. So it's gonna look like it's pretty much done, but there's still about five billion dollars worth of work that will be done there. Five to six billion dollars worth of work. Coming well, and that's about all I have to report, I guess, unless you have any questions. I do have one question. Was Jim on the Sewer Committee? I can't remember who the Sewer Committee members were.
Jim and I were on the Sewer Committee.
Congratulations, Ernie.
I didn't realize I had been appointed.
You got appointed, you got volunteered just the same way I did.
No, we will, we will need, we will need another Select Board member to be voluntold for the committee.
Voluntold.
We can go tiptoeing through the sewage together.
You were on it before.
I don't know. He took my place on the Appeals Board. I will take his place on the Sewer Committee, if I'm nominated.
I'm gonna nominate Ernie Southir to replace Jim Long as a member of the Sewer Committee.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Do we have an opposed?
You're the one that buffaloed me anyway.
Vote him back, Ernie.
Can't watch us fall.
So I got a question from Mr. Nichols. When, when the road's done there, is it gonna cut that close to that structure? Because I noticed when they, when they re-leveled it, it's really, when they go through the bend right after the park, it goes right around the building. Is that pavement gonna be that close to that structure?
The pavement will actually be that close. The roads, the roadway will not, but we will pave to the structure. I talked to Bill about this. What we'll probably do is paint a line to delineate the edges of the road.
Because it's super sharp, and I kinda got concerns. And is there any interest to put maybe some pylons there to protect that structure?
That structure won't move.
Is it? So if somebody gets into it?
Yeah, the, there's some controversy, and I took Bill for a ride. The recommendation, I believe, from M.D.O.T. was a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit through there. So I took Bill through there in his truck. I was driving at twenty-five miles an hour, and his nuts got very white. So we do plan on putting in some speed tables through there to slow traffic down and have the M.D.O.T. come back and revisit that.
Gotcha. Yeah, twenty-five, I feel, would be way too fast for that corner.
Something in the ten to fifteen mile an hour range through there.
So. The roadway, I went and painted it out Monday. The roadway is gonna be three feet off the cement abutments. And then there will be a two-foot break between the road and the bike path around that corner.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, thank you. Yeah, it's really tight down there.
No, it is, yeah. We realize that, but hopefully we can get some reduced speed limits through there. Not only that, but twenty-five is kinda fast going down the rec field, by the rec field, when all the cars are there and they're backing over the traffic and there's kids and.
Well, it'll be used as a cut through. I feel like it will absolutely be used as a cut through.
Yep. Especially when the construction starts on seventeen.
Absolutely.
That is gonna get used a lot.
Correct me if I'm wrong, the state can't actually route traffic that way, but people can go that through. You may want to consider putting up signs that doesn't allow through traffic during that time. I don't, I don't know how you're gonna stop it. But there will be speeders, and we probably will be asking for patrol down there.
I, well, I think the residents are gonna have some concerns too.
Yep.
We don't have a lot down there, but with the bike trail down there and the residents, I feel that there will be some concerns with speed. Or right down, you just can't go fast down there. You just want to carry a car.
Yep.
Sorry?
That's all I have.
Thank you, Mark. Mr. Nichols?
We got the sweeping done in town yesterday. We only have a few more roads out of town to sweep off. Painting crosswalks, I have no idea with Mother Nature when we're gonna be able to do that. All the paint is in, paint spray is ready, but we have not had the weather to do any of that yet. So, and Kenny did get most of the rec field mowed one complete time down there, but there's still a couple spots that are too wet to mow. So most of his spring cleaning is done for the rec field and the parks. And all piles and wings are painted and taken care of, so that's a good sign that we're done for a while.
You never know. How much is road paint these days? Out of curiosity.
What's that now?
How much is road paint going for these days?
The bill I picked up the other day for all the paint, I believe, was right around like fourteen hundred dollars.
And you expect to be able to do all the crosswalks and all of that?
All the crosswalks and all the packing spaces. I went up, show Williams, who'd been getting that paint from them for the last several years. They pretty much held the price the same as what it was last year. I think it went up five cents for a five gallon table.
Did that new tax apply to that, or has that passed? Wasn't there supposed to be a new, new thing added on to paint? I don't know if that actually passed or not.
That was quite a few years ago. They had another for the paint care program that got added on, probably like at least five, six years ago now.
Thought they wanted to do it again, but maybe I missed it.
Well, they probably do, but it just hasn't gone through yet.
Okay. Is that everything? All right, thank you. Do we have any public comment? Ms. Long?
Is, is it possible for the property that's going to be given to the realtor at forty-one Main Street to have a restriction on the sale that says that it can't be a cannabis store?
I don't know. I mean.
There's, there's six now. And doesn't the ordinance say six?
No, the ordinance wasn't passed to restrict it.
Oh, okay.
The voters voted it down.
I mean, I think we could do that if it was a sealed bid, but I don't, I don't know if there's a way to do that through a broker.
I'll find out.
It's, we'll ask the question. Well, carry on.
If the new ordinance passes, it's too close to an existing store, too close to a library, too close to a lot of things.
Were we going with seven fifty or something? I'd have to, I haven't had a revolvement this draft.
It's too close to a current store.
Right.
Is that the former clause, or the?
Westonado.
Westonado building, yeah.
That's my only question.
And just to add to that is that tomorrow at six is gonna be the public hearing on the proposed new cannabis ordinance. And so I think everybody that's interested should come.
Thank you, Erin. Do we have any other public comment? No, not CNN. No executive session?
I move that we adjourn.
Second. No discussion? All those in favor?